I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, April 26, 2023. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I have to reset. Let's see. First item is may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so Ms. Manasa has her tennis match tonight.
Senior night.
Senior night, hopefully it's not raining on her. So Scott, you're flying solo tonight.
Yes, I am. So we have this fantastic graphic that was made by Abigail Conkright, Leonardtown High School and student in the James A. Forrest Career and Technology Graphics Communication Program, Military Child Purple Up, fantastic and all the representative, all the branches of service. Now she did make some of the branches bigger and smaller to fit in, but of course there is no preference necessarily given to, but that is how they fit in there. It's a beautiful piece of work. Last, this week, oh my gosh, it's been this, it's this week, this week. On the 24th, we had our Superintendent's Advisory Group of Employees, so called the Sage Group. That is all of our exceptional support staff and educators and leaders across the system, all of our S.P.'s toys and poys, and we get together. We had a hiatus during the pandemic, but we have gotten back in earnest now that we are face to face. We met earlier this year in February and they came back together again this week. And we, it's really just an opportunity for us to interact and talk with them and hear what's going on in the schools. And then follow up on questions and comments that they bring forward to us. We had a great deal of conversation around Virtual Day because we just had the Virtual Day on Friday. And we wanted to hear how that went in each one of the schools from teachers and support staff and administrators. There was a lot of, there's a lot of sharing, things that went well, things that they were surprised by, and things that we really need to consider if we are to ever incorporate it formally in our calendar. The one thing that they did say was that it felt good in the schools to have a little more time to interact with one another. The Virtual Interface got some kids to actually engage a little bit more than they had traditionally in the classroom. A lot of information. We also talked about social emotional learning. We talked about recruitment and retention, how we are drawing people to us. They had a lot of, we had discussion about the current assessment that's going on in schools, all the MCAP testing that is going on throughout the month of April as we transition into May. Built on top of that on the AP testing as well, and a little bit of a discussion about what 2023, 2024, it looks like, a great group of employees. Today, we had the Superintendent Student Leadership Advisory Council, Slackers, as I call them, from all three high schools in the Fairlead Academy. We talked, we start with some team building. We talked about the climate survey that they did last year and a little forecast for the climate survey that they're doing, that they're currently completing right now. That's the Maryland State Department of Education Climate Survey. We talked again about the Virtual Day debrief, about their experiences and how it went. We did a deep dive into college and career readiness and the use of the Naviance platform in ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. We had feedback sessions with representatives from supporting services, as well as upstairs with career planning and with curriculum. It was really, it was a great, it was a great day, a great group of kids. They really have a lot to share. The Virtual Day feedback that they gave was that they, again, from a high schooler's perspective, they appreciated the day and the time and the novelty of being able to log in, to do some virtual things and to catch up. One of the, catch up, exactly. So, so we did release a survey at the close of school on Friday. It has been open all this week. It went out in most schools, smores. We'll keep this survey open throughout this weekend into next week so we can gather as much data as possible. But we have had 2,626 responses so far. The majority have come from parents, a quarter from students, and then we have staff and both staff and parents and community members kind of rounding it all out. The big, the headline news and what we're focusing on most is, you know, whether or not they think we should do this again, whether or not virtual learning is working, should we put them in our calendars for next year? And of all the 2,600 responses, 47% said yes, 40% said no, and 11% went all the way through and still said, I have no opinion, which is interesting. It breaks down as one might expect. Elementary, no. Middle, no. High, kind of excused towards maybe we'd like it. Parents, and specifically, whoops, parents, and specifically we broke out by level because if, and that's what we heard from most, is elementary parents, that they believe that virtual education and virtual opportunities and virtual days don't meet the learning needs of their kids. And, and we've heard that pretty much echoed throughout, that's what we heard throughout the pandemic as well. So 61% said, no, they do not want us to have virtual days in the calendar for next year moving forward. Middle, about, again, it's kind of split down the middle, and in high school, 52%, yes, 38%, no, and 8% in the middle. We've, we learned a lot in that one day. And at the elementary level in particular, I really want to talk about the planning that elementary schools have to go through and the process that they have to go to to work with their children to actually access online resources. That in itself is a form of learning, and that is where learning is going. Learning won't be all virtual. That's not, that's not a good model. We agree that's not a good model. But a blended model where you do some of your learning in person, you form relationships in person, but then you use virtual opportunities to go back and forth and to explore certain topics and to interact with others, that probably is going to be something that really stays. So we, we learned a lot as a system on that day. We also had 100% substitute coverage. We, we didn't, we didn't have any open jobs on Friday, for whatever that might be worth. We're going to do this one more time. And we are going to gather as much data as we possibly can. For the teachers themselves, they're going back and talking with one another about what worked, what they found to be a really positive interaction. And then also working with our elementary kids to be very comfortable with and actually have the stamina to go through and do all the processes to access online learning. Keep in mind, we're using a learning management system, an online learning platform with our elementary kids for the, really the first time ever. I mean, the pandemic ushered it in, and now we're working on institutionalizing its use in classrooms. So for all of the parents who have communicated and have shared and have filled out the survey, for all of the students who have yet to fill out the survey, you know, we've got 17,493 kids. We should have a lot more kids responding. So we're going to push it out again. We're going to emphasize with, with principals, please make sure that they include it in the smore and they're drawing it out. We'd like to get as much information as we possibly can. And we're going to be tweaking what we do for the upcoming Virtual Day in May. And then we're going to gather all of that information back together again to talk about the calendar for next year. But from our elementary parents in particularly, in particular, we understand the challenges that this, that this presents, and we're just, we're learning as we go through this process. So that was the early release, early release Virtual Friday. If you didn't get to see Mean Girls, man, you missed out. Mrs. Bailey and Mrs. Washington and I, boy, we had, that was a, that was a, that was a fun night. And it finished a fantastic high school musical theater month with Grease and Music Man and Mean Girls. It was, it was just absolutely wonderful. For elementary, for middle school, we've got Leonardtown Middle, Esperanza Middle, and the Chippewa Public Charter School are finished, but when we get into May, we still have Margaret Brent and Spring Ridge, both on the same weekend, not this weekend, next weekend. You can see Annie Jr. and Matilda Jr. They're going to be great productions. I know that the students and staff are working hard to get the final tweaks in to have those wonderful opportunities. Across the elementary school, they're, they all had plays as well. It's, there's just, there's a lot. There's a lot of things going on. And in fact, April is quickly drawing to a close. We only have two days left in April, then we will find ourselves in May. And May gets really, really busy. We are wrapping up all of our fantastic work with our seniors and drawing to the exciting conclusion of commencement. We are assessing every possible thing that we can with MCAP this and MCAP that and MISA this and AP testing that. There's a lot of stress in May. And if we can find our way to take two steps back, there's also a lot of really good things to celebrate and enjoy in the month of May. So we have our second fantastic logo that was done also by a gentleman, Mansell Gray from Leonardtown High School for Autism Awareness Month. So April is Autism Awareness Month and a fantastic, awesome logo for that. And then right next to it, please join our team. We have positions available at all levels and all different categories. If you can't find a job with St. Mary's County Public Schools, if you can't fit in someplace, boy, you're just not trying hard enough. We have a little bit of everything available for people. So please come, join our team. And with that, I conclude my remarks.
Wow.
Thank you. In and out, 13 minutes.
Okay, then we will just go straight into the month of the military child with Dr. Marr.
I've spent the whole day with Dr. Marr and his fantastic team. What a great day it was working with kids in this, in this room.
Those students are really just incredible, and I can't tell you how much we appreciated their feedback throughout the day. So I'd like to invite up to the podium with us Captain Burfield and Dawn Simpson. Captain Burfield is the executive officer for the naval base, and Dawn Simpson, as you know, is our school liaison. And Dr. Smith, if you would join us as well, because we have a proclamation.
I'm going to read a proclamation.
So first, I'd like to just give a couple of remarks here. April is the month of the military child. The month of the military child is a special celebration and proclamation. It is the legacy of former Defense Secretary Casper Weinberger and was established to underscore the important role that children play in the armed forces community. Our schools recognize and celebrate the military-connected student population and their contributions. We honor their sacrifices. They and their families make as those who love, they love, serve our nation. The military child is resilient and adaptable. They are strong and they add strength to others. You may have seen the analogy comparing the military child to a dandelion in that they're strong, resilient, and they are ready to fly where they are sent, experiencing new lands, new adventures, and new friends. And wherever they may be, they bloom. We are grateful to those who bloom here in St. Mary's County, and we are honored to help them grow. We recognize the month of the military child, and we share our appreciation for all of our military families who are part of our school communities. So, Dr. Smith.
With that, I get to read a very smally, small print resolution. Whereas thousands of Americans have demonstrated their patriotism and commitment to freedom by serving in and for our U.S. Armed Services. And whereas there are more than 5,000 military-connected children and youth that attend St. Mary's County Public Schools. And whereas military-connected children and youth continue to make momentous contributions to family, schools, communities, the nation, our state, and St. Mary's County specifically. And whereas these children are a source of pride and honor to us all, it is only fitting that we take the time to let them know that they are valued and supported and recognize that military-connected children serve too. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County does hereby proclaim April, in the few days left within April, as the month of the military child in St. Mary's County Public Schools and the community. All school staff and students are encouraged to recognize this month as the month of the military child with appropriate activities that honor, support, and thank military-connected children. Signed this day, the 26th of April, 2023, by all board members. Thank you very much. I appreciate that very much. Here's a proclamation, and would you care to share some words?
Thanks, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks for having me, and Dawn for setting it up. So Mrs. Dawn Simpson here, our school liaison officer at Pax River. I'm Captain Doug Burfield, the executive officer at Pax River. Skipper Derek Kingsley had another commitment tonight, so he couldn't be here. So two years in a row I get to come, so thanks for having me back. This is great. Now this year I brought two military children with me. I have my daughter Audrey and my son Ben. Audrey's a junior at St. Mary's Reichen High School. This is her second year there. She came as a sophomore. She transferred after her freshman year at Catholic High School in Virginia Beach. So I had a long time in Norfolk with my wife and I and our family. But Audrey had to, you know, we got orders up here when she was a freshman. So at the end of her freshman year, she had to transfer, which is not easy. So it's military kids like that that adapt, like dandelions, right, that go where you're planted. So, so far, so good, right, Audrey? And Ben, Ben is three, so we've only moved once in his life. Audrey moved four times, and maybe a base housing switch in there too, so we'll say five in her life, so it's 16 years old. But a lot of military kids move more often than that. You know, every two or three years, their parents may get a set of orders and maybe PCS, Permanent Change of Station, across the world, across the country. We've been really fortunate. It's been mostly just Virginia, DC, and Maryland now, first time in Maryland. And we love it, and we're really glad to be here. And the St. Mary's Reichen community has been wonderful to Audrey and my family. So, you know, I didn't grow up as a military child from St. Mary's, Pennsylvania, and I grew up in the same house. My parents never moved. My mom taught school, my high school math teacher for 38 years, and I always had that tutor at home. You know, military kids, it's important, they're teachers. I can't emphasize enough. The support of their families, and they're making new friends, and they're getting adapted in new school environments with brand-new teachers and staff. And, you know, having excellent support there, and Dawn helps with this as a school liaison, is critical to their success and their, you know, moving around a lot. So thanks for doing this for us, for the month of April and recognizing.
Thank you. Thank you, Captain. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. We, you most certainly may, oh my gosh. Yes, of course, though. And then we'll take a picture.
Good evening. I just wanted to take a moment tonight to thank you for adding this item to your agenda. And not just for what you've done throughout the month of April. It's been wonderful to see the variety and the creativity of the ways SMCPS has celebrated the month of the military child, from purple pinwheel gardens out in front, to messages on their marquees, to assemblies, to breakfasts with the military parents and families. There's just, it's, again, it's greatly appreciated. It does not go unnoticed. I know it takes a lot to put it together. Teachers and counselors and principals' plates are already overflowing. So we're grateful that they take the time to make this month special for our military children that go through so many transitions and time away from their service member when they're deployed or temporarily duty assigned. I know many of you are military-connected, so you know that yourselves. I'm grateful for you as a board where you make decisions and you keep the military children in part of those decisions that you make. They're in the forefront of your mind. You make my job so easy because you're already mindful of that and factoring that into some of the decisions you make. And I would be remiss if I didn't take time to thank your staff across the system. Again, I've mentioned the principals, the counselors, the teachers, everybody down on the deck plate. But I don't think there's a division underneath you that I don't reach out to on a regular basis. Student services probably most of all, as we deal with enrollments, transitions, even the health services. How do we interpret immunization records, and how do we get everybody up to date and keep them enrolled in school? To your Department of Curriculum and Instruction with navigating programs, course offerings, transfer credits, all those kinds of things, dual enrollment. How do we make it work? And again, just across the system, everybody is eager to help and graciously not only works with our families upon their arrival, but oftentimes even prior to, so we can manage those expectations and provide soft landings and smooth enrollments when they get here. So I just want to thank you, Dr. Smith, the board, and the entire team at SMCPS for all you do for making my job easier, and again, for all the support that you provide to those who serve our country. So thanks so much.
We are very thankful for you.
Yes.
One right here?
Yes.
Do you need the proclamation?
Well, somebody's got to hold the proclamation. Captain, could Captain do it?
No, sure can.
You're going to be in the middle, sir. Thank you.
Perfect.
All right. Again, thank you very much.
Okay, let's see. We have no public hearing, any public comment? Okay, then next up is the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Tonight's consent agenda consists of the approval of minutes for April 12, 2023, personnel teachers, personnel administrative and supervisory, the 2023-2024 Board of Education meeting schedule, Department of Transportation's school bus purchase, Department of Food Services broadline distribution of food and non-food supplies, and Department of Safety and Security cellular enhancements at Chopticon, Leonardtown, and Great Mills High Schools, as well as the James A. Forrest Career and Technology Center. And with that, I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. We have two action items tonight. The first one is identification of our blueprint schools with Dr. Montgomery and Dr. Marr.
Hello.
Hello again.
Evening.
Science and Dr. Marr's with me because then I know that, no problem pulling up the PowerPoint. I won't sit there puddling with it.
So as our ongoing discussion of the blueprint, every bit of it has a next step. And as we're currently reviewing and our process for our whole blueprint plan, one of the things that's part of the legislation is the support for encouragement of teachers to go towards national board certification. And in the annotated code in the blueprint for Maryland's Future, it says that their additional teacher salary increase is associated with the career ladder and shall include the following. So first is becoming a national board certified teacher. So any teacher who's a classroom teacher has an additional $10,000 salary increment. Addition, part, another increment that can be added there is if they're at a low-performing school identified by the county board or the State Department of Education. So in addition, we, as, as part of our negotiated agreement with ESMIC, have an additional $3,000 stipend for teachers who hold national board certification as well. So those are just a little bit of background about the salary pieces that go with national board. So with, the Maryland State Department of Education has identified schools as low-performing. So those are schools, if you're a national board certified teacher, at one of those schools, you receive the additional $7,000 increment on top, on top of the TED. In their identification, it would be schools who have earned a one or a two-star rating, and we went over the star ratings a few meetings ago with you, for two of the last three years of data identified. St. Mary's County Public Schools has no schools that are identified by the state as low-performing schools based on that state definition. They also provide local flexibility to identify up to 10% of your, of our schools as blueprint schools based on local circumstances and priorities. So again, while we have none identified by the state, if we look at that 10%, that would allow us to identify three schools under this category as blueprint schools.
So, so what we looked at is, first of all, what MSDE was looking at for the low-performing schools, which was a student performance and how they did on their star rating systems. And included in that for high school would be their graduation rate data. And we added for the local flexibility part because we wanted to be able to see if there were any kinds of resources that we wanted to give to schools based on some challenges that we'd identified. For example, their percentage of students that were receiving free and reduced meals. So we looked at that by level, and what was our high school with the highest percentage of free and reduced meals? What was our middle school with the highest percentage of free and reduced meals? And what was our elementary school with the highest percentage of free and reduced meals? In addition to that locally, we looked at our staffing challenges. And Dr. Farrell was up here a couple of weeks ago presenting our staffing challenges to you. And what schools did we have persistent vacancies at? And what schools did we have challenges filling those vacancies throughout the year and even coming up next year? So it turned out that the schools that MSDE had identified as with local flexibility were those same schools that came into those categories for us. So at the elementary level, we have George Washington Carver Elementary School. At, and at the middle school, it's Spring Ridge, and at the high school, it's Great Mills. So they were the schools that we chose then to exercise the local flexibility to provide this compensation with your approval for them to be identified to be blueprint schools to receive that compensation if they have nationally board certified teachers teaching at those schools.
And so with that, we ask your consideration to approve the identification of these three schools as blueprint schools under this local flexibility option of low-performing schools. This identification provides additional salary, salary increment for teachers at those identified schools who hold national board certification under Maryland Statute Section 6-1009.
So with that, any questions you may have?
No questions. Thank you.
Do you want to? Mary?
I want to make sure I'm understanding this because this is the first time I'm seeing it. So at those three schools, teachers, they have to hold a national board certification? They get $10,000? How much? And then the seven?
Yes.
And then the three?
Yes.
So they, so you're saying they'll get $20,000 additional salary on top of what they're already making?
Yes.
If they work at these schools or choose to transfer to these schools, an extra $20,000. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
All put, all put together, we have negotiated $3,000 for national board certification with all of our employees who, who we currently have.
So they're already getting that?
They're already getting $3,000.
Okay.
The state of Maryland, if you are a nationally board certified teacher and you teach more than 60% of the, or 60%, 60%, you are then eligible for another $10,000. With this designation as these three school sites being blueprint schools, with your approval, that would then also have the candidates eligible for another $7,000 on top of that. So in theory, as this all works out, if you are a nationally board certified teacher and you would like to go teach at Great Mills High School, Spring Ridge Middle School, or George Washington Carver Elementary School, you would not only earn your entire traditional salary, but then an additional $10,000 on top, or $20,000 on top of that.
Is that every year?
$20,000 on top of that.
Every year.
Is that every year?
Every year.
As long as they remain at that school.
At that school.
$20,000 every year?
Every year?
Yes.
Wow.
This was, again, that's why I wanted to bring up that legislation because that was part of that, that blueprint law, particularly with encouragement towards getting national board certified teachers. And the element of identifying additional schools targets specific schools that would, that would be recruited for.
But the $3,000 for the national board certification, they already have. So if you already have that and now you're transferring, you're only going to get the $17,000 more. You're not going to get the full 20 because you're already collecting the three.
So each year it'd be $17,000?
Each year it'd be $20,000.
If you're at one of those schools.
Total, okay. You're already getting the three.
The important thing to realize is that we are, we are going into negotiations next year to negotiate a career ladder. We do know for sure that with this, this next year, it would be $10,000, $3,000, $7,000 for next year certainly.
Wow, that's great.
The goal, again, the goal of the blueprint is to have the very best people working with the greatest need students. And if you were to, if you were to approve this, this then gives us the ability to augment salaries up to $20,000. And I will tell you, while that's, if you're currently working with us, that's one thing. But if you're in another county or another state, like let's say you're in North Carolina and you're making, I don't know, $60,000 after 20 years of teaching and you have your national board certification, you can come up here and make substantially more money. And ultimately, this is going to be one of our recruitment tools to draw people to us and to put highly qualified teachers in front of our greatest need children.
And this would start as of July 1?
July 1.
Okay.
July 1, yep, so.
If they're certified like in North Carolina, they can bring that.
Oh yeah, we have our reciprocity. Yep. We give them all their years of service. It's a, it's a, it, please come teach in St. Mary's County Public Schools, especially those highly qualified, fantastically credentialed teachers from other states. We will love you like nobody's business and we will compensate you for your talents.
So do we already have teachers who are nationally board certified at these three schools?
Great Mills has two teachers that are nationally board certified, and the other two don't have any.
Okay.
So they can put in for a transfer?
Transfer, absolutely.
And the transfer deadline is when?
June 1st.
June 1st, so they have until June 1st if they want to transfer to any of these three schools to get that financial incentive
That's correct.
to go to the schools with the greatest needs.
Yes.
We currently have 41 teachers who are identified with national board certification in the system. And when we looked at vacancies the other days, the other day, and that can fluctuate a little bit from, from day to day, but at the moment, we have approximately 17 vacancies between, across all three schools.
For the upcoming year.
For the upcoming, for the next school year, yep.
Understand. May I have a motion?
Dorothy.
Actually, I think you want to read that one and not that one.
Oh, this one's different? Okay. The Board approves the identification of George Washington Carver Elementary School, Spring Ridge Middle School, and Great Mills High School as blueprint schools under the local flexibility identification option of low performing schools. This identification provides for the additional salary increment for teachers at identified schools who hold national board certification under Maryland Statute 6-1009.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
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 Those opposed? All right, the motion is carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Now Tammy just has to figure out how to pay for it, so that's all.
So half the money, so it's, the, the funding is wealth equalized. So half of it would come from the state and then half of it would come from local county funding, local funding.
And that's for 24, 25?
That's, that'll be for 24, 24.
And of course, we've already figured that out.
Oh, good, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
With that, then moving on.
To more and more of the items. So as you're aware, under the current law, we have been gradually increasing the minimum wage. Just in January of 2023, we increased the minimum wage by, for the state to $13.25. And the law called for an increase to $14 as of January 2024, and then $15 in January of 2025. However, recently, there was a Senate Bill 555 and House Bill 549 entitled the Fair Wage Act that accelerated that increase to $15 effective January 1st, 2024. Whereas the bill actually takes effect July 1st, 2023. We just recently concluded negotiations for July 1st, 2023, for fiscal year 2024, for ESMIC teachers as well as our support staff. And that negotiated agreement allowed for a 5.5% increase to the pay scales, which allowed for an effective hourly rate increase to $14.66 effective July 1st, 2023. What we're proposing is a 3% increase, as agreed upon with ESMIC ESPs. And then that would increase our pay scale to $15.10 effective July 1st, 2023. We provide for all of our salary increases beginning the 1st of the fiscal year. So as you can see on the screen, the current rate is 14.66 that was previously proposed or agreed upon for July 1st, and it's proposed to increase that to $15.10. The current negotiated agreement allows for a 3% increase between ranges as well as a 3% increase between every step on the ESP scale. So a summary of the salary enhancements for next school year include for the administrators group a 2% previously negotiated salary scale adjustment plus one step with a total budget impact of $800,000. The teachers agreement included a 5.5% salary scale adjustment plus one step with a total budget impact of $7.2 million. And the ESP agreement called for a 5.5% salary scale adjustment and one step, which totaled $2.1 million originally. We're requesting an additional 3% per N M U adjustment. Therefore, that would result in a $3 million impact or a $900,000 increase. So I'm requesting your approval on that.
Question I have is on steps, step A and B. What's, what's the, the time difference?
The differential? I believe it's 3% for the supervisor's scale and a 2.5% on the teacher's scale.
But if I go from step A to B, is that, is that tied to the calendar? Or is that time tied to merit?
It's a contract year increase.
So, so.
All of our teachers would receive a step increase beginning the next fiscal year.
So each one of those things, that's, those are all negotiated.
Understand, but I just wanted to know what the metrics were.
He's looking at just the proposed salary scale where you have step A is at 510, 1510, and then step B is at 1535. Like what, what, how would you move between step A and step B?
Based on the position?
She says it much better than I.
Yeah, so the, the lanes, one, lane one, two, three, it depends on the position that you hold within St. Mary's County Public Schools. Each position is assigned to a particular lane and then you go down through the lane with the negotiator.
Based on your experience.
But that, the, the, the range A step, the, the range one, step A is the, that is the starting salary, that is the starting hourly wage for all employees. Nobody is paid less than that amount. That's our starting, and then all those things cascade out all the way through. So we had negotiated effective July 1, 2023, to have it go all the way up to $14.66 with the passage of the bill. And the proposal before you is to increase all of that, another 3% to get to the starting salary at the, at the lowest paid, $15.10 an hour.
So if you look at the chart, every person within this unit is benefiting, right? Because.
Yes, every.
You're not, you're not just changing the first lane, the first step, right? Every, every salary across the whole chart is going up.
And we have approximately 800 ESPs in the school district that will benefit from this.
So the next, the next slide after this shows, so the, the lowest paid people in St. Mary's County Public Schools will receive the highest percentage salary increase. And the highest paid people in St. Mary's County Public Schools will receive the lowest amount of salary scale increase. So we will be putting our, our money to the people who perhaps need it most.
Dorothy, do you have any questions? Mary?
No questions, thank you.
So the law says as of January 1st, we are doing this July 1st, is that correct? Okay.
Because we have historically tried to do things July 1, as opposed to mid-year.
I just wanted to make sure, given the law said one thing, and it wasn't specifically spelled out for, you know, dumb me here. I wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something. Okay, that's all I had. May I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County approved a memorandum of understanding to the negotiated agreement between the Education Association of St. Mary's County for Educational Support Professionals and the Board of Education of St. Mary's County for Certificated Professionals, beginning July 1, 2023.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's, we have two informational items tonight. The first is School Library Month with Ms. Weisakinsky.
Look at that, Mrs. McCourt, you are so helpful.
No, that took some stress off.
Right.
I like it.
She's expected to do the same when you leave because her presentation's back up.
So yes, I am here tonight for recognition of School Library Month. It's a busy month of the year and I just want to recognize all that our school libraries are doing for us. And typically, I pick just a day in April. It just happens to be actual American Library Week this week, and today is actually Library Outreach Day. So this week, week was very fitting for my presentation. So every year, National Association of School Libraries has a theme, and this week's theme and this year's theme is there's more to the story, which to me is indicative of what we're doing in our school libraries. So there is much more to school libraries than reading picture books to students. We're creating, we're crafting, we're exploring, they're coding. And more importantly, I truly do feel that library programming advances communities. We have a really great partnership with our public library, which I will speak to in a few minutes. And I just really want to recognize the fact that we are doing more in our school libraries and I think most people really recognize. Especially at our elementary schools, I do always want to give props to our elementary librarians because they are tasked with teaching and meeting with every student in that building in, in a week. So for some of our schools, you know, we mentioned Carver earlier in the board meeting, she's down there teaching about 30 classes a week. So it depends on what school you're at, but they really are with every student in that school building. So April's also the month where it's the Maryland Association, Association of School Libraries Conference. We were just there about two weeks ago. So in the state of Maryland, I provide the opportunity for our library media specialists to go with. And I am proud to say that we had the most librarians at the state conference in any other county in the state. And when you're thinking Baltimore County and Montgomery County and Howard County, it really was something that people kept saying, wow, I keep running into St. Mary's County librarians. We were everywhere. And it was a really good opportunity for them to learn and grow. And so that said, you can get nominated to be the Maryland Librarian of the Year, and we did have six nominees. So you can self-nominate, your building leadership can nominate, or I can nominate. So a couple of the names on here I did nominate. So I did want to recognize that Brandy Barrell up at White Marsh was nominated, Trish Cole at Great Mills, Justiney down at Ridge, Priscilla Dyson at Spring Ridge, Brenda Hager at Lenartown High School, and Mandy O'Neal at Chopticon High School. And I, these folks really represent what the nomination is about, and it's really about advocacy. And, you know, I was looking at this list earlier, realizing that all three of our high schools are on there. They are one person in a building with anywhere from 1,600 to 2,000 students, and they really do have a massive task of trying to meet everyone's needs, so. And yeah, the Brandy up at White Marsh, she does such great things. Justiney down at Ridge, and Priscilla Dyson, if you've never been into the Spring Ridge Middle School Library, she really is an advocate and really does a lot with the students down there. So the core values of library media, not only in our system, but I do think across the United States and in the public library system, is relationships and advocacy. So our media specialists and clerks, they're working with students, with teachers, with parents, with admin, really the entire community. And I am proud of our media specialists because they really are involved at the state, local, and even national level. We have so many folks that are members of the Maryland Association of School Libraries. They advocate, they're on committees, they're reading Black Eyed Susan books. They are all over the place when it comes to state leadership. And so yeah, in our media centers, going back to the theme of the week that we are doing more than just reading in the media centers. We're creating, they're coding. A lot of our elementary schools have Girls Who Code Clubs. They're hosting after-school book clubs. Priscilla Dyson at Spring Ridge does a read-in every year for Black History Month, and she gets school community members. She asks all the many people in this room to videotape themselves or to show up and go into the classrooms with the kids. And, you know, more importantly, they're doing professional development. And thank you to 2020. We also now help to manage the accountability and checkout of 18,000 laptops. So they have a huge task. They really are the person that folks go to to get help and support with those tech needs and making sure that they're accountable for their resources. So just in the past two or three months, just going out and doing some observations, I just want to talk about a few things that I was seeing that I think that some of these schools need credit for. I was at Duke and Mary Owen was coding with the Dash bots, and she had Mars and she made a whole scene of space and had to use coding skills. And these kids were in fifth grade, but they learned these skills sequentially from the time that these kids were in kindergarten. So by the time they get to fifth grade, they can do this at this school. Down at Carver, I believe this was kindergarten, maybe first grade, coming together to create marble towers, which was fun because they had to work with a partner. And if anyone's ever created a marble tower, you can't build it this high because it will fall over. So just watching those kids that were, you know, six years old really work together in groups. Most recently, I was at Hollywood last week. Ms. Zudo was doing It's Not a Box activity. It's this really clever children's book where they take a box. The kids have to think about something that's not a box. And so what she did was she provided everyone with just a white box, a bunch of supplies, and they had, you know, 40 minutes to create something that was not a box. So, and we use Breakout. Breakout EDU is a platform that I've had grant funded for a few years now, which we love. There's physical breakout boxes, there's digital breakout boxes, and I see those being used all across the county. And just as a reminder, we are really the, you know, leaders in promoting our digital resources. I have a little snippet of what our SMCPS library media page looks like. I am proud to say that our Pebble Go and Pebble Go Next is an elementary database. I was, of course, running some usage statistics before I got up here. Just in the past three months, at our elementary schools, these kids have been on these databases and we've had 380,000 searches. So when you think about our population of students just at K through 5, and really, I would say this is more 3 through 5, that's a lot of time spent on these databases. The kids know them, the media centers know them. More importantly, our elementary teachers use these consistently for research and for classroom lessons. And so I do have Michael Blackwell in the audience who I, he's the director of the St. Mary's County Library. I brought him today or asked him to come today because we really do rely on our public library. The public library meets us where we are, which is in our schools. So our digital resources, our partnership, our SOAR partnership, they save our county, our school system, a lot of money because I use a lot of their databases. So we have student library cards for them, which we initiated, I think, in 2019. They have access to age-appropriate resources. That's the other thing. Our backend integration only allows students to read the eBooks and the resources that are grade appropriate. And that is due in part because they have partnered with us with SOAR, so we can go in and the students now have access to not only what we have in our schools, but what the public library has. And that really has opened doors for our kids to have more access to reading. BookFlix is through a company, is through Scholastic, which everyone knows for the book fair. If I had to buy BookFlix on our own for our school system, it would be probably close to $30,000. And we have partnered with them with our library cards, so our elementary schools can go on and use BookFlix. And it really partners fiction with nonfiction texts. And our, all of our teachers use it at the elementary level. It's a really great database and it really costs us nothing. And it really could be something that I'm like not putting my eggs in a basket in because I can, I can use the public library. I've done a few lessons this year on how kids can get into Mango languages, which is through the public library. So it's our foreign language classes, they go in. Our teachers are assigning them lessons and units using Mango, so they have to go into the public library and do that. And of course, summer reading, I know that we promote kids to read in the summer, but we always direct them to the public library for their summer reading program. And I think one of the most unused resources, in my opinion, is the fact that the public library offers live homework help through Brainfuse. So, you know, kids can go in anytime after, I think it's from 1:00 PM to 11:00 PM, and using our public library login and our partnership, they can get live homework help. They can sip in papers to get edits on. So it really is a good resource for our kids. So I just wanted to make sure that I had representation from the public library here because they really are amazing. Sarah Stevenson, who is, I think her official title is Virtual Services Coordinator? Okay. And then Jill Hutchinson, who is our, the youth coordinator at the library. When something goes awry with our integration, where kids are in a real live with, in front of a teacher, and a teacher emails me to say, Heather, this person can't get logged in, I can email Jill and Sarah, and within 15 minutes, they have responded to me. They have figured it out. I've responded back to the teacher and the kids are on. So they do a really good job helping support our students.
Before you go off of that page, I think the fact that with the student library cards, where the fines are forgiven, is a huge benefit to our students. And I have to thank the library system for, for making that possible. Lives of students and parents are in. Lives of students and parents are incredibly busy. And sometimes those things get overlooked. So, and sometimes kids are just so excited about the books, they aren't ready to hand them over. So thank you for that.
Yes, and it is, it's been nice to have, you know, unfortunately for them, opening during the pandemic and just having a lot of barriers. Every time I've gone to that public library in the past few months, there's always teenagers gathered inside. They're at the tables, they're working on things, they're doing homework together, they're outside. So it really, again, it's a community. Libraries are essential to communities. And I do see that our partnership is really good. And then just last but not least, you know, we just, another thank you. We worked tirelessly in the schools, my media specialists. They're doing, they're just like a jack of all trades. And I do want to thank Dr. Montgomery, Dr. Smith, and Ms. Mills for supporting our library programs. It is really nice to work in a county that sees value in our media centers and our school libraries and understands how important they are and integral they are to a school system.
Thank you.
The, in terms of your total book inventory, how much would you say is eBooks versus hardcover?
We, that's a good question. We run state reports. It really varies by school because each school has their separate amount of money that they get to spend, their MOI. So it really depends on where that falls. I would say that typically what I see is an average about twenty percent eBook, which doesn't seem like a lot, but really, a lot of our eBooks are simultaneous users, meaning that each student in St. Mary's County can read the same book at the same time. So it's kind of a skewed number, but it's about twenty percent.
Twenty percent?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Ms. McCourt?
Absolutely.
So before I wrap my presentation, as has been the standard protocol, your line-by-line transactional detail of all of the budget changes and full transparency, of course.
Thank you.
Readers. Thank you.
Light, light reading, I like that.
These are pretty sure it's the, these are the IHR.
And I will email it out to you later because it's a little fine print there. So the FY24 budget update. The unrestricted fund revenue totals two hundred and seventy-nine million dollars. This represents a forty-four thousand dollar difference from the budget that you sent across the street to the county commissioners. With regard to the local funds, the current adopted budget included one hundred and twenty-one point five million dollars. What you requested included one hundred and thirty million dollars. And what has been supported is one hundred and twenty-seven point three million dollars. This is a five million dollar increase to support the negotiated agreement from the county commissioners, as well as an eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollar increase to support the safety and security officers from the county commissioners. That represents a four point eight percent increase in local funding. We have increased the planned use of fund balance to three point one million dollars or one point one million dollars over your prior approved budget. We've included two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars for the Chesapeake Charter School, one hundred and forty-three point three million dollars in state funding. This represents an increase over your prior approved budget of one point two million dollars. Overall, this is a fourteen percent increase over the FY23 adopted budget, of which the largest increase is associated with the compensatory education funding. Bottom line, there is an increase of twenty-six point three million dollars for the FY24 budget, which represents an increase of ten point four percent. The largest changes on the budget since our prior conversation were in instructional salaries and wages based on the ESP three percent additional increase that you just approved. One point two million dollar decrease under textbooks and instructional supplies. And this isn't truly a decrease. Instead, what we're doing is we're shifting the funding and utilizing available ASR funds. We have a three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollar decrease under student transportation. And this is as a result of a fuel rate decrease as compared to what we had originally projected. And a five hundred and seventeen thousand dollar decrease under capital outlay. And this is because you've already approved the purchase of Oakville Elementary School furniture, which was planned for next year because we use some salary, we use some saving, budgetary savings in the current fiscal year. So we'll go back through each of the individual categories. Under the administration category, there is a requested increase of five hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars or thirteen point five percent. This includes funding for salary increases. We have removed the SAF auditor, and this is part of our budget balancing for next year.
That's a school activity fund auditor.
Thank you. We have included and maintained the new blueprint accountant position, the new human resource staffing manager, the network switches and access points. And we have included a reclassification or added a reclassification from coordinator to supervisor of budget. Under the middle-level administration category, there's a requested increase of one point seven million dollars or nine point one percent increase to include the funding for the salary increases, a new charter school secretary, removal of the new programmer analyst position, inclusion of the Microsoft Support for Expanded Services, data security platform enhancements, Google Workspace for Education, San Service Storage and Firewall. We have removed the mid-level administration laptop refresh. However, we have added the Maryland Lead Supervisor Blueprint Coordinator and moved that over from grant funding. That is because the state has now included one hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a wealth equalized basis in the state funds for next fiscal year. We've included a reclassification of the Director of Assessment and Accountability to Supervisor of Accountability and Assessment, and a reclassification of the Director of Curriculum Instruction to Chief Academic Officer. Under instructional salaries and wages, there's a requested increase of eight point five million dollars or nine point five percent increase to include funding for salary increases, a new charter school guidance counselor, the removal of three certified athletic trainers, new ESOL teachers, three of those, six new high school PE health teachers, the reallocation of blueprint pre-K expansion positions from restricted fund of sixteen positions, the reallocation of two teachers from Title II, the reclassification of an IRT mentoring induction to eleven-month, the increase in substitute rate of pay. And we've added two new pre-K classrooms, which includes two new pre-K teachers and two new, I'm sorry, four paraeducators to support pre-K classrooms. We've included the minimum wage increase, as well as a salary increase for the National Board Teachers, teaching at the local burning schools.
And before we leave, we did remove the requested certified, the athletic trainers coming on as FTEs, but we are including more money in contracted services, and you'll see that a little later on, so that each school will have thirty-five hours of an athletic trainer available to them every single week, basically the equivalent of having a full-time athletic trainer.
Under textbooks and instructional supplies, there is a requested increase of one point three million dollars or thirty point two percent increase. The smart panels and technology refresh for schools. We're instead utilizing fund balance as well as ASR funds for those items. For Spring Ridge Middle School and the Lexington Park Elementary School network refresh for the PA system, the access points and switches to support those systems, that is being moved to fund balance and use of CIP funds. Instructional software shift that was originally planned to be moved over from grant funding, we reassessed and we do have additional ASR monies available to support that, those two programs for one more year for EdPuzzle and Desmos. We maintained the inclusion of career and technology instructional materials. We have added an increase of eleven thousand dollars for SAT fee increases for next year. And we've maintained two million dollars use of fund balance for the secondary math textbook adoption. For other instructional costs, there's a requested increase of seven hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars or thirty-five point nine percent increase that provides support for the increases associated with dual enrollment and advanced placement, and overall decrease in contracted temporary hourly support due to FY23 mid-year reallocation of staffing. We have added contracted psychologists. We currently have two vacant FTEs, although we're continuing to recruit for those positions. We're planning for the potential that we may not be able to find folks for those positions. And we need to make sure that we've got funds in the appropriate category. We have increased the contracted temp rate of pay due to the minimum wage increase. And this is where we've also added back the contracted athletic trainers. Under special education, we have an increase of one point five million dollars or seven point two percent increase to include funding for salary increases. We've removed one of the two new secretarial positions that were originally requested. We've included a reallocation of the blueprint pre-K expansion positions from restricted, that's five positions, the reallocation of the Tides program from restricted, total of nine positions, an increase in the high routes contract and non-public placements. For student personnel services, there is a requested increase of one point one million dollars or seventy-eight point four percent increase to support funding for salary increases as well as the workforce development career platform. For student health services, there is a requested increase of one hundred and seven thousand dollars or three point six percent increase to support the funding for salary increases as well as the reclassification of a mental health coordinator. For transportation, there's a requested increase of four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars or one point eight percent to fund the salary increases, contracted bus PVA increase, hourly contracted driver attendant rate increase. And you'll recognize the reduction to five dollars per gallon. Maintenance and operations fee increase, healthcare trust contribution increase. And we've removed the bus that was planned for purchase next year because you all just approved that on your consent agenda. And we've removed the Head Start transportation. Under operation of plan, there's a three million dollar increase of fifteen point six percent to include funding for salary increases. Safety and security assistance, as were funded by the county commissioners, we've changed that from eighteen to twenty with the change, the reallocation of one position from the ASR fund, as well as, if you look at the last bullet, we're removing a coordinator of safety and security and making that a, another safety assistant. We're maintaining two computer support specialists, removing the cybersecurity engineer. We have two new building service workers, a reclassification of information technology specialist, IT project coordinator. The upgrade of the video surveillance system, we're actually seeking grant funds. Therefore, we're reallocating that to security enhancements and use of fund balance. We're replacing the Letty Marshall Dent Fire Alarm System, contractual inflationary increases for operations, utility increases, replacement vehicles. And we have the reclassification of two ESP coordinators to supervisor and the reclassification of the chief of security to director.
Before we move from that page, the cybersecurity engineer, given all of the challenges faced with respect to the security of our systems, how do you anticipate covering for that? I mean, I know we have a number of software programs and
Right.
variety of protections in place.
How do you pose covering the identified need?
Yep.
Is that your question?
Yep.
Well, first of all, the position, the position itself is, is an enhancement that we'd like to have, but it isn't necessarily something that was, it's critical. We currently have very sophisticated staff who really do understand the world of cybersecurity and are working with all of our databases and our redundant systems. But when we went through and looked at everything, what we really needed, what we ultimately had to prioritize, which is more important? A very expensive, top-level cybersecurity engineer? Or is it better to have computer support specialists who are going to be actually out working with students and access and technology within the schools? I think this is going to be something that comes back through next year, but it's also a position that's very challenging to fill, even if we did go forward, because we would not be paying at a level that would be in any way competitive with neighboring counties or with other resources. The challenge is that a, a computer security engineer, what we can offer for compensation isn't necessarily going to be something that's going to draw people to us. It is probably much more practical for us to look at the current staff that we have and how we can grow them towards that competency within the current positions they hold.
Okay, thank you.
For maintenance of plan, there's a requested increase of one point seven million dollars or thirty-eight point seven percent increase to include funding for salary increases. We have removed the new maintenance team lead. We've maintained the contractual inflationary increases, equipment replacement, contracted painting, building repairs, and roofing maintenance. And we've reclassified a vacant position, the Work Order Specialist Vacant Position to Supervisor of Maintenance. Under fixed charges, we have a four point seven million dollar increase or eight percent increase to include social security associated with the salary increases and reallocated blueprint funded position pension increase. The health insurance estimate was received, it's actually a seven point seven percent, I apologize, there's a typo on the slide, seven point seven percent premium increase. And then, of course, a general liability of workers' compensation insurance.
Before we move off of that, Ms. McCourt and the staff with whom she works have done a great deal of work to have that seven point seven percent be a real, a very real number aligned to the data that we have coming out of the system. Originally, Care First came back and gave us a
Eleven percent increase.
Eleven percent increase. So basically, it would have been more than twice what we had originally planned for. And with a great deal of back and forth and a lot of deep analysis, we got to seven point seven percent. I really do appreciate Ms. McCourt's lead on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Under capital outlay, there's a requested increase of six hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars or a sixty-nine point two percent increase to support funding for salary increases, building modifications, capital infrastructure facilities, management software. We've removed the Oakville Elementary School furniture replacement, as that has already been purchased. And there's a reclassification of the secretary point five vacancy to a fiscal secretary one point oh. So in summary, we have a planned use of fund balance to support textbooks of two million dollars, technology refresh of six hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, security enhancements of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and Lexington Park Elementary School PA network refresh of ninety-five thousand dollars for a total planned use of fund balance of three point one, almost three point two million dollars. So our budget highlights include seven point two million dollars to support the Eastmick negotiations, a salary scale adjustment of five point five percent and step increase, the Eastmick agreement plus the recently approved MOU of three million dollars to support five point five percent increase and step plus the MOU additional scale adjustment of three percent, SAMA agreement of eight hundred thousand dollars to support a salary scale adjustment of two percent plus step increase, twenty safety and security assistants with appreciation to the county commissioners, of course, healthcare increases, transportation fuel costs, bus contractor increases to support the driver and aid wage increases, bus maintenance escalator. The dual enrollment and AP exams, we've included eight hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars there per the blueprint mandate. We've included one point one million dollars for the workforce development per the blueprint mandate. Two million dollars for the secondary math textbook adoption. We've included increases to recognize CPI increases for facility maintenance and, of course, the escalators associated with the minimum wage increase. We've included staffing to support pre-K expansion as well as the removal of the Head Start program and that reorganization. Are there any questions?
The fund balance of three million, one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, how much extra monies do we have in the fund balance? Over and above the three, three point one eight million?
We don't have any extra monies.
No extra.
All of our available fund balance had already been allocated back in November, December for the
I've just, so the, this might be confusing in that this isn't, this isn't like a currently existing fund balance from last year. This existing fund balance from last year. This is what we will anticipate ending, the end of this year, right now forecasting our revenues to our expenses. We feel very comfortable that we are going to have more than three million dollars of leftover revenue. So instead of just saying, we're going to have three million dollars, put it aside and we'll figure out how to spend it later, we've been doing this for the last several years. We, we forecast the fund balance, and then we actively build the anticipated fund balance into next year's budget. So textbooks, technology, security, and the, and the, the public address system will all be covered by this year's fund balance going into next year. That, I know that that gets very confusing, because, and there's also the people in the public who try to make it more confusing than it is, but we try to use every dollar that we have. We do carry over money, year to year, a healthcare call, a couple, a million dollars to cover us in the event that we have inclement weather, or we have fuel that escalates, which of course, has been very useful. And, and then ultimately, this money built into next year's budget. It's not like when the county commissioners are talking about their fund balance, they let that number accrue to twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty, whatever it is, and then they gather on, figure out what to do with the money after the fact. We forecast that we're going to have extra money, and then we build it directly into next year's budget.
And we only build it in for non-recurring items.
Right.
So if this amount does not materialize, these are the items that will be first to go.
Yes.
Okay, that, that makes sense.
Dorothy?
I don't have any, well, I'm going to ask you later.
Do you have, now?
No, I'm, no, I'm good. No, she, I already asked her one, she said, yeah, I'll have to get back to you, so we'll, we'll just work on that.
And again, this is, this is to give you an idea of where we are, given that we presented, we built our budget in December, we presented in January, we discussed throughout, we rushed it over to make sure that it was over with the county commissioners February first, and then a whole bunch of stuff has happened all through February, all through March, all through April, and this is where we are right now, to make the money that, that we believe we have from the state, we believe we're pretty good with those numbers, and then set aside with the committed money from the county commissioners, because the county commissioners have said one hundred and twenty-seven point, round up, four million dollars. So this, given that money on the table, here are all the things that we're able to do within this, within this budget. And you'll see that the majority of all the new money is going towards the people doing the incredible, incredible, important work with our kids, in all facets.
Mary, Kathy?
I just want to thank you and your team and everybody that worked together to put this together. It's a lot of work, and when we get it, you know, it's done. You've spent a lot of time on this, and we appreciate it. You work during the holiday, the winter break, and
Every Saturday, every Sunday.
Yeah, thank you.
We're going, we're going back and forth.
Every time Scott calls.
It's, yes, yeah.
You're sincerely appreciated.
Thank you.
I'm happy that you negotiated on the healthcare
Yes.
amounts.
To get those, to get that number.
Get the number.
To actually be reflective of what our claims history is.
Yeah.
So thank you, rather than just what number they decided it should be. So, I know that takes a lot of work.
They certainly like to err on this with caution.
Yes. So.
Every dollar's dear. We want to get as close as possible to the amount, and if, if we get to the point where we have to kick in a little on a call, that's great. That means that we're really, we're really close with the budget, and that's exactly what you want to do.
So I do have one question. The dollar amount on the mid-level administration computer refresh that we took out?
We're actually handling that via computers that we purchased for the Virtual Academy that are no longer being utilized by those students.
Okay.
So we're recycling those.
Okay. All right, so it's not like it will not happen, it's just not, it's still happening, it's just not for spending money to make it happen.
No, yeah, we're able to do it with existing resources.
Right, gotcha. Okay. All right. Anyone have anything else?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tammy. All right, let's see. With that, next board meeting, into the month of May, Wednesday, May tenth, eight AM for executive session, executive session, and the open meeting begins at nine. And with that, we are adjourned.